Yeah, we're starting. That makes that makes a lot of noise when you do that.
That'd be a heck of a ride, carnival ride. Catch that on the way down.
I just wanna say, we did like the story at last meeting. Why if they forgot in the paper? I think this is the third time I've sent him stories and they've been.
They they don't tell me either.
No.
But they didn't pay you for submitting it.
Well, they're gonna pay. Say I submitted, I still have it if they want it.
Was I quoted in the story as saying anything cool or important or anything?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. I'm not that narcissistic, I promise. Maybe a little.
Is it nine yet?
I do. I like it a lot. Thank you. Yeah. As far as.
Okay, it's nine o'clock and so we're gonna start. I'll call the meeting of the County Commissioners to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Waterman, would you say the pledge?
Well, your lead, I think I'd like to say this later. Until you probably can stand.
All right, number two on the agenda is calls for public comments. Uh, and public comment can be submitted in person. Um, in the room here or by telephone at the following numbers, six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Number three, are there any conflict of interest items on the agenda for any of the commissioners?
No. No.
I have none. Okay, number four, action to approve our agenda today.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any comments, corrections? Any changes? Hearing none, all favorably say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, that motion carries. Uh, number five, action to approve the June thirteenth twenty twenty-three minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Any corrections? Hearing none, all favorably say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, that motion carries. Not their reports, facility manager. Steve. Come on down.
Hey, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, let's start out ag building. This meetings and auctions and minor events still going on out there. Um, there was an incident earlier this month, air conditioner in the echo chamber quit working um earlier the month. Um, these units will be replaced underneath warranty. Um, government buildings. New sound system and has been installed in a large courtroom on the second floor. Carpet has been ordered. Um, getting quote, gonna get quotes on upgrading the cameras. Through a grant from the Sheriff's Department will be given in the next couple of weeks, so they'll come and ask for um application to apply for the grant. Um, detention center. Um, met earlier this month with uh the engineering teams. Um, for inspecting of the HVAC system. Um, we'll be expecting the drafts pretty soon, the drawing graphs pretty soon, and so we had on that by the end of the month. They had scheduled, they figured they'd have it done by this week sometime. And then line up a time to get together.
That'd be good.
On the drafting and stuff on that, so. Park reservations this year as of June nineteenth. Setting at eighty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. With nine hundred and seventy-seven reservations total since the beginning of the season this year so far. Um, have had a couple electrical issues on some camping pads. One, um, gophers had chewed part of a line about three foot section. Um, underground and then one we discovered earlier this year when we had tree spaded last fall nicked the. Part of a line only had a hundred and ten instead of two twenty going to a couple pads.
Sure.
Um, also, we had a camper back into a water spigot. Um, resulting in the plumbers were out yesterday to to fix fix that one. And then still with the insurance company, they're still going over reviewing of the charges and so we had so far. Um, there was another update yesterday and all you guys weren't included on that email. I'll forward that to you, so. Um, weed. Um, spraying on county roads are nearly complete. They just got two more county roads to spray. Two thirds of the townships have been sprayed. The shoulders on the interstate are done with about twenty-five percent of the. Uh, with the UTV out in the in the right ways and so we had, we've had some really excellent weather the past few weeks and so we had now I suppose we're gonna be getting winds every day, so might halt. Spraying a little bit. Um. Had a weed tour was held last week up at the Bean Ranch near Bevelin with nearly uh forty people attending this way. I mean, I was kinda interested and so we had on after being there and so we had that. That the history of of the Bean Ranch, how it was, how I mean, uh, the gentleman's grandfather is one that actually um homesteaded the land and so we had so when he was turned twenty-one. So it was kinda interesting. Hearing that facts, so. Um. Leafy spurge collecting collection is to be conducted on Wednesday afternoon in Cottington County. Location is still to be determined and I'm gonna go out and so that later and try to do some sweeping to determine which place that I will select to do the collection. Also, collection will be done on Thursday up west of Sisseton. So we had, we did when we were up there last week, did a sweep through the area where we did one last year and there was quite a few leafy spurred beetles out, so. Yeah, it's all gonna depend on weather and so we had, and especially if it rains, we'll have to cancel. Um, if it's windy, it's gonna be really tough to collect good beetles. Beetles like even when you do collection, it should be warm and calm is the best time. When it's miserable for you, it's the best time for the beetles to be out.
To keep that in mind.
Yep. And then if you, if anybody has to call six oh five eight eight two for more information or. Six oh five eight eight two six two five five for more information. Also. Um, pesticide jug recycling is scheduled for Tuesday, July eighteenth from nine to one at the Cottington County Weed Shed.
What was that, July eighteenth?
July eighteenth, Tuesday, yes. And as far as West Nile goes, no fogging has occurred this season, kinda due to some extreme weathers. Um, we haven't got the trap set because we've been busy fogging and so we had, but we'll probably be getting them set in next week or so. We've just been going off the numbers of what Water Town has and the numbers are really, really low.
Too dry.
It's too dry for them. It needs moisture for anything that, so. It's wet and so. That's what I have.
What, what did you say? The warranty thing, the for the your first thing?
Okay, the actually what it is is the air conditioning unit in the echo chamber is about five years old. Um, when he started up this spring. He noticed the next day it wasn't cooling, so he got contacted um and so the um heartwick which would of what we had got. Um, they came out and checked it, had electrician come out and check. Um, couldn't figure out Hartwick was gonna find out if uh um. The manufacturer would warranty them and he come back just the other day stating that. Those units are underneath warranty and so I don't know if there was a power surge. Have no clue. Um. That's what the electrician had figured, but nothing else in the facility even indicates a power surge, but.
This is both units that are in there?
Both units are, yes, and it's both units, both of them.
Wow.
Interesting.
It had to be a surge of some sort.
Had to been just in that spot, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, any questions for Steve on his report? Let's see, should we take uh number seven there on the agenda? So for the uh. The HVAC proposal for the egg building, wanna go through that one with Steve?
Yep, okay, the proposal is uh going through Hartwick. Um, and that proposal is of sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and that would be putting um three units on the in the south expo. This would complete the the projects of all the expos to have an air in there. Um, this would put new furnaces also in there because the old hanging ones are there and I know that the. New furnaces in there are a lot quieter than the old furnaces where they rattle pretty good when having events. Um. With that, the electrical estimate is nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So together. Let me get a quick calculator. I didn't calculate it together.
Sixty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Yep.
Well, in that neighborhood.
Yeah. This is a budgeted item. This is a budgeted item. Yes, I did budget this item. And it goes at least into my budget item where where I'm at.
So these are, they're two completely separate proposals.
Yes, but they're both, yep, they're gonna work together, right? Yep.
Okay.
This was in the but this this.
This is budgeted, yep, yep, covered by the budget amount, yes.
Okay, we need two, we need two separate actions. Okay, let's take the electrical one first since it's first in our packet. Zero, zero.
So moved.
So motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman to accept the proposal, move electric for nine hundred uh nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, that motion carries and then separately, is there a motion to accept Hartwick heating's?
So moved.
I make a motion to accept Hartwick bidding bidding for the amount on the sheet, sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So I have a motion from Van Dusen, second by Waterman and. Yeah, he he said it first.
Sorry, Charlie.
But it was nice to, I liked when you gave us the whole thing, so um, any other, any discussion on that? The hearing now and all favorably say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
Well, to start off, the guy's been working on the soft spots on our gravel roads. Hard to believe how dry it is. We still have mud. But uh. We're getting most of those taken care of now and uh we've gotta come. One way up north and we'll start on that tomorrow. And the last time I was through there, it was still pumping mud up through the middle of the road, so.
Crazy.
Um. What they do is they dig it out. We haul material, they put fabric down and we haul material in and pack it. And trying to get about a foot of gravel on the surface of that. And uh. It takes quite a while because we have to haul all the material out, haul all the material in. And try not to damage any more road on the way up there, so.
There's a blowout on uh eighty-one. Right, uh, going north out of town. Yesterday, the concrete blew.
Oh, yeah.
By that pavement did.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, kind of by uh. All the funeral homes right in there.
Okay. Yeah, 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 when it gets too hot, cement.
Actually, do a big hole in it.
Yeah, I guess I never went through there yesterday, so.
Yeah.
Wow, that's not my road.
But they had it all cut out already this morning and ready to refill it, so.
Yeah, that with the concrete, it's more time consuming to do, they have to dig it out and.
Yeah.
Set it up for forms. It's also not supposed to happen that much either.
No.
No, but it it does.
Yeah.
It does. Also, the guys were working on our asphalt roads where we had blowouts from this spring. The other. Lot of it was from contractors hauling. Mainly, it was one road that we had a lot of issues on. But they've got most of that taken care of now. They did some uh patching for Pelican Township also. As you know, last Wednesday, June fourteenth, we closed County Road Six. Up on the east side of Waverly and facing construction. Started taking out the asphalt Thursday morning. They were able to take the asphalt out, dig everything out, expose the culverts. And uh. Start doing the repair. There was a. Each section of culvert, they had to basically pin them together so they couldn't move. Back and forth anymore. There was a lot of hand labor. Like I told Lee this morning, we're probably gonna have a uh change order coming on some of that. They worked on it Thursday, Friday. I think it was uh between nine thirty and ten o'clock when I called dispatch and opened the road backup. They worked until dark to get it open Friday. So it was open for the weekend. I'm going up there with Mark Younger as soon as the meeting's done and we're gonna inspect everything. We still have work to do on our gravel roads. This from this spring where the water washed the gravel off, that'll be FEMA projects. The road's still been soft. We just haven't been able to. Yeah, get things done. We're about a month behind on everything. The guys are starting to haul P rock to a couple different locations so we can chip seal. We're planning on starting chip sealing next Monday, the twenty-sixth. It'll be on County Road Three, which is west of Cransburg. And it goes all the way to the county line, north through South Shore. And then County Road Six from County Road eleven all the way over to County Road Three, east of Waverly. There's roughly thirty-one and a half miles that we're gonna chip seal. We'll go around Waverly also. And uh, that's about all I have for now. I'll have. Pictures and stuff, my next monthly report of the culvert project that we had. Cause they had, we had to haul material in. When they got down to the bottom of the culvert, water came.
Yeah.
So we had to haul rock and stuff in so they could be in there working. But uh.
So what's the estimated time of completion for that one?
It's done. It's except for the asphalt and we're gonna let that sit for a while. Okay, and like I said, Mark Younger and I are going up there.
Okay.
And inspect, so.
Rick, can you um? Can you say the chip seal project over by Waverly again? Where is that gonna be at?
It's County Road Three, all the way from the county line north of South Shore. And you come south. I think it's uh four sixty-four and it'd be four sixty-two. All the way down to State Highway two twelve. And then County Road Six, which is one sixty-fourth. From County Road eleven, which is Old Eighty-One, all the way east to where it goes to South Shore.
Okay.
And then around the town of South Shore or Waverly, excuse me.
And when is that gonna be done?
That's a good question.
When are you gonna start it?
It takes a while. The later you get the harder it is to get trucks in with the oil. So.
That the process on eighty-one going north out of town here. And then over to the interstate, they just did that this past week now. They chip sealed it. They used a different process. I I don't know.
They chip sealed and they put a fog seal over the top of it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what that's called.
Yep. Yep, that's something that I'm trying to learn how to do so we can do it to our roads.
I just wondering if that has proven to work better or.
It helps, it helps cover up quicker.
Cover up the rock.
Yeah.
The pier.
Cover up.
It it holds them in place too, probably a little bit.
A little bit, yes. It's a real thin layer.
Yeah.
That kinda seals it up, so.
I know motorcyclists appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I'm trying to learn how to do that so we can get it done.
Well, I drove on it. I mean, I waited for the the fragment to, you know, let me go on and it was pretty fresh and. I was a little bit concerned about it splashing on the vehicle, but it did seem to do that. It didn't, I don't know, it it drives pretty quickly.
Yeah. If if the temperature's right and there's not a lot of humidity, it'll drive pretty fast, but if there's a lot of humidity. I've heard horror stories about taking hours for it to.
I would imagine.
Dry and not being able to drive on it, so. Yeah, it's a process to get done.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions?
Alright. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Great. Uh. Andrew, number eight is uh discussion and possible action to enact a burn ban resolution. We gotta hear from Mission Management Committee.
Good morning. Uh, as you all know, it's very dry out there. Uh. The entire county is abnormally dry, um, except for the upper or northeast corner, which is uh D one drought. Uh, May was the twenty-first driest May on record over the last hundred twenty-nine years, so. Seems like, you know, like I guess it would be. Like the one in six chance of that happening felt like a bit being this drive. So, I mean, it's not. It's not awful, but it's not great. So uh, I touched base with uh fire chiefs this morning. Uh, most, well. The ones that uh were for the burn ban or for um recommending a burn ban were more passionate about it than the ones who. Um, didn't mind as much. There's one part of the county where. They've had a little bit more moisture than the rest of it recently and. He's the fire chief there said he didn't, he could see it going either way, like didn't really. Seem to care. Uh, the other one said, I think we can hold off for one more week maybe, but reevaluate things. Uh, the other two. One said, anything that's been cut for hay has stayed extremely dry and that could take off and go pretty fast. Another one, um. Said that there's been um within the county about three to five uh grass or ditch fires uh per week for the last three weeks. And anything to limit additional ignition sources would be appreciated. I've taken a look at the forecast. I mean, it looks like Thursday. Well, basically Wednesday night through the end of the week, there's, there's chances for rain. Um, anytime they've. Noted um what they anticipate the snowfall amounts to be, it looks like they're anticipating between a tenth and a quarter of an inch. Except for higher possible and thunderstorms. Uh, but when we're talking as dry as we are, I mean, that's really not gonna. Make a huge dent and like. How things are looking.
So what is your recommendation?
Uh. Well, I think, I mean, especially with holiday coming up, I think that it would be prudent to. Like do our part uh to to take. As many precautions as we can, um, especially if we are going to ask, you know, people in the county to. Do a little bit more um to make sure that things are safe, like if they're gonna be doing fireworks and stuff like that, so I think that it would be. Probably a. A good time to put one in place.
Okay.
And we can reevaluate next week and see kinda how much, how much rain we get.
I'll make a motion to enact a burn ban this week and we can review it again next week.
So the motion.
I'll second it.
You're using the second by Johnson.
So this would be your resolution number is twenty twenty-three eleven.
Okay. Twenty twenty-three eleven.
Any discussion on, any more discussion on that? So just to, so people are aware, I mean, next week, we're gonna be looking at this every week at least and um. So hopefully we, you know, the idea is to lift it as quickly as we possibly can. Absolutely. I mean, that's the intent of if we, if we, if we are to enact this.
So will that uh if enacted, will that go into effect immediately? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Yep. That's, okay, all right, any other discussion?
Probably the most important thing here is by us enacting the burn ban, I hope that our citizens in County County realize that. We're very aware of how dry it is and that they need to be as aware as we are and be very, very cautious. Um. It's not gonna affect the Fourth of July, so don't. Don't get all upset about that right now, but uh, uh, in the meantime, we just need to practice uh some safety and. I think this is the right choice at this time.
And Mr. Chair, if I can expound on that, uh, being in the nine one one center every day, um, I can tell you that your statistics are correct. We are seeing uh, you know, more, more grass fires as conditions continue to dry out, so. Until we get some rain, it's just gonna keep getting drier and drier, so I think.
And you said, uh, we were talking a little bit, but in your, in your job as a nine, nine one one director, do you see any scheduled um. Um, control burns coming up?
There's none in Cottington County right now that is on our, that is on our call list. Uh, we do have one down in Lake Norton, but that doesn't affect us, so um, okay, you know. All right, I I think people are aware how dry it is, um, but unfortunately, it's one of those things where even if you're watching it and it's a controlled burn, then the wind comes up just a little bit enough to push those embers. And then, you know, then we have a fire that takes off and so that's what we're seeing.
Right.
Okay.
Um. Chair, may I add, so this is in place until you would take it off, so you'll see on the agenda now a resolution to lift the burn ban. That's how it'll look going forward.
Okay, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favorably say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, if that motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Hey, number nine, action to approve payments.
We have none today.
Automatic budget supplements.
We have uh one of those. Yes, it's an automatic budget supplement uh to the welfare budget. It is uh due to her payments for rent and utilities, the ARPA dollars. So um in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
I entertain a motion.
So moved.
So motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any other discussion? So this is, this is just that the ARPA money that.
Yeah, that she gets monthly for, yes.
Yes, the rental assistance.
Yeah, the rental assistance. This is something that she didn't plan in her budget. It's just money that it's passed through basically, so we have to supplement her budget with the dollars that come in.
Right, okay, all right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favorably say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no. That much carries. Um. Number eleven, action to keep ourselves.
Yes, we have several of those today. Uh, you will start seeing, so July first is when our step increases um are implemented. We have some of those starting this week and then we have two new hires. I'll start with the step increases first. Um, these are all in the Director of Equalization Office, so first is Diane Merchant. Effective seven one twenty twenty-three administrative specialist. She'll go from current step is eight to nine, grade thirty. Uh, her new rate of pay is twenty-six forty-three or four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Um. Michelle Peterson, effective date seven one twenty twenty-three database coordinator. Uh, current step five going to step six, grade forty-five. Current rate of pay is thirty seventy. New rate of pay is thirty-one forty-seven, five thousand four to seventy-five seventy-eight. Heidi Selchert. Seven one twenty-three is the effective date, position title appraiser two. Uh, step four is her current to step five, grade forty. Current rate of pay is twenty-eight fifty-two. Her new rate of pay is twenty-nine twenty-four, fifty thousand or five thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Barbara Martenson, seven one twenty-three is effective date administrative assistant. Uh, current step is eight or new step to nine, grade twenty-five. Current rate. Is twenty-four fifty-six an hour. New rate is twenty-five seventeen, four, four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Melissa Sears, seven one twenty-three, effective date appraiser two. Current step four, new step five, grade forty. Current rate of uh pay twenty-eight fifty-two an hour. New rate twenty-nine twenty-four an hour, five thousand eighty-seven seventy-six. Allison Borbush, seven one twenty-three, effective date appraiser two, current step four, new step five, grade forty. Current rate twenty-eight fifty-two an hour. New rate twenty-nine twenty-four an hour, five thousand eighty-seven seventy-six. And Sarah Tash, seven one twenty-three, effective date administrative assistant, current step four, new step five, grade twenty-five. Current rate of pay twenty-two twenty-five. New rate. Twenty-two eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. All right, our two new hires for the highway department. First employee, Clayton Miller, effective date seven one twenty twenty-three, maintenance two, grade twenty-five. Current step one, new step one, current rate twenty-sixty-six. And then our second highway department new hire. Uh, Craig Bus, seven one twenty twenty-three is the effective date, shop foreman mechanic, grade forty. Current step six, new step six, current rate of pay twenty-nine ninety-seven.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen to approve these personal transactions.
Second.
Swing by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favorably say aye. Will say no, that motion carries. Actually, a profile request, I didn't see any in there, so. Are there any public notices? Get on the calendar. Matt, I don't think, I don't think anything's. I'm not seeing much just until, not until next week.
On Monday, June twenty sixth, we'll be having a retiree celebration for Denny Warwick in our nine one one center. Anybody, actually, it won't be in the nine one one center, my apologies, it'll be out at the Water Town Airport. Uh, so if anybody would like to attend, Danny's been with us for. Twenty three years, I think, and he'll be retiring the end of this month, so.
What's the time?
Um, from two to four P M.
So that's next week, twenty, one, one day, okay, yep. Anything else?
Uh, just a minute, I think that, um. Bridge dedication, yeah. Looking for the date on here.
That's, yeah, three, keep that on, keep that on the radar. Okay, um, about any old business, number fourteen. New business. Nothing to. A lot, that not going on, but it's seems to be kind of, it's along steadily. Any comments, public comments, I don't think I've heard any, anything, any phone calls, um. Or number sixteen, any commissioner comments?
I did uh attend the uh. South Dakota Retirement Board meeting this past week and uh, you know how the markets have been. Here and here, just creating. Um, I will tell you right now, though, that as of July one, all those that are receiving a retirement. Benefit will get an increase of two point one percent. Uh, we're. Already looking now at uh twenty four, twenty five. Hopefully that'll be better. But uh. At least we didn't go backwards and uh. The uh fund is still one hundred percent. Uh, funded, funded, so we're in good shape.
Yeah, thanks for serving on that board, it's important to all our employees and. Okay, any, any other commissioner comments?
Uh, and I would, would add that, uh. Uh, I did throw my hat in for another term and I was. On a pole, so I was reelected for another four year term on that board.
Congratulations. Thanks for serving. Any other, any other, uh, and do we have a need for an executive session? Okay, all right, um. Then that brings us to eighteen, which is. Possible motion to adjourn, if there's any interest in that. Some motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer, all in favor, please say aye. Say no. That motion carries, we adjourn, thank you.